Do you know the documents number?
I do. It's, uh, two eighty-eight.
I'm sorry?
Two eighty-eight.
Two eighty-eight.
Two eighty-eight.
Two eighty-eight.
Two eighty-eight.
It is that. I mean, that's what we own as a house, you know? So he's like...
Two eighty-eight oh four. And what's the other one?
But it's insignificant.
Two eighty-eight oh four?
Yeah, and the other one will be...
You go with the school.
Exactly.
Okay. You want to make the motion to... Okay.
Counsel President, I take document number two eighty-eight oh four out of order.
Where are we?
Please.
Two eighty-eight. Two eighty-eight?
Are you...
Okay.
Counselor Plant?
Yes, sir.
I can take document two eighty-eight, uh, oh four out of order.
You have stuff...
There's a motion to take, uh, document two eighty-eight oh four out of order.
So move.
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Plant?
What is this law?
These are my address. This is...
Those are urgent ones?
Almost one of your own.
But this is just what I'm hearing. But they don't need to be...
Thank you very much, Counsel President. The, uh, House Committee voted by unanimous vote to, uh, send document number three eighty-eight oh four slash A.
Two eighty-eight.
Two eighty-eight. Two eighty-eight.
Two eighty-eight oh four.
Yes.
Sorry.
Mm-hmm.
A. Uh, to the full Council with favorable recommendation, this would, uh, declare a surplus property and dispose of the property at one twenty-four Myrtle Street, which is tax map one seventy, one seventy lot, one twenty-two, two...
Eric and Holly Preston.
Second.
To Eric Preston and Holly Preston for the sum of three thousand two hundred dollars. Um, and there's an amendment motion as well, amendment number six, to, um, modify number six, to remove the addition to the home until the party is ready, uh, for the adoption and approval is needed. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to, uh, sell one twenty-four Myrtle Street to Eric Preston and Eric Preston in the amount of three thousand two hundred. Motion had been made and properly second. Are there any questions or discussions? Mr. Plant, what is the property going to be used for?
Um, I believe it's only going to be used for open space and parking.
Open space and parking, okay. Are there any other questions? Is there is none? Let's take a vote. I'm sorry?
Just, uh, my... In all the conditions, okay, are the standard ones of having to be in place by, uh, Counsel President through you, I'm referring to the Chair of Housing...
What is the question?
That, um, in a situation like this one, all the standard, um, conditions apply, the restrictions.
Oh, okay.
I mean, they don't need anything other because it's just, uh, Eleanor Butter who is making space for parking. And they will be told how to provide... Is that true? The parking...
Isn't that part of the conditions?
Yeah.
Okay. So basically, your motion, your motion is to include the conditions.
That's right. Includes the conditions. We just modified one, which I see that's been changed in the, in the document. So it, it, it should go as read, which is to utilize the property for parking and green space only. So it's already as part of the act.
Okay. 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 If there's no other question, uh, let's take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, Mr. Chairman of the Housing Committee, will you take document three fifty... Are you going to make a motion to take document three fifty-two?
Can I make a motion to take document three fifty-two fourteen out of order?
So move. Second.
Motion has been made and properly second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
They oppose? The ayes have it. Continue.
So this document was sent to the Council with favorable recommendation. And this is where, as we do with all of these now, we split them up. This is three fifty-two fourteen A. Um, and this is declare a surplus property and to, to, um, to transfer the property... Let me get the name again.
Elena Campbell.
Thirty-two. It could be. Could very well be.
Too light a candle, you said?
Elena.
I don't see the name on the sheet.
Elena Campbell.
Yeah, Elena Campbell.
Elena Campbell. Um, with all the conditions that are listed there. Thank you. There's too many pieces of paper, Counsel, for that. The assessed value is fifty thousand three hundred dollars. And make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly second to sell one dash three Saunders Street to Elena Campbell in the amount of fifteen thousand three hundred. Motion has been made and properly second. Are there any questions?
No. She's Eleanor Butter, right?
Huh?
Yes, she's in the butter. She's here as well, yes.
Okay.
If there are no other questions, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay. Let's go back to our agenda in the order that we have it. Document three ninety-five fourteen. Uh, Counselors, uh, you have a package that I gave you. And again, I would like to emphasize that that package of information is for your eyes only. Uh, very sensitive material. And the request at this point is to base on the material that you have in front of you, uh, that we ask, uh, the mayor, uh, to come in front of the city council, uh, to talk about the function, powers, authority, and duties within the scope of the office of the mayor. Uh, in order, in order to request the attendance of the mayor, it requires a majority vote of this council. Uh, and again, they, uh, I would like to emphasize that there are sensitive materials there because of litigations, pending litigations, uh, that we, uh, do not discuss details. Uh, you have, uh, two set of papers. One which provides a summary. The other one, uh, provides the details. So I would like to open for discussion and questions.
Uh, discussion?
Yes.
Through you, Mr. President.
First, uh, uh...
Point of information?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
We will need a motion either to approve or not approve an action before we engage in a discussion.
Well, I, I thought that I would make a motion that, um, we make an official i- invitation to the mayor of the great city of Lawrence, um, to come to our next council meeting for discussion, at which time, depending on how the discussion goes, we would decide whether executive session is necessary.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor that we, uh, request the attendance of the mayor. It has been properly second. Are there any questions or discussions now?
Just, um, very briefly, Counsel President...
Go ahead.
Um, I just think it's in, it's important that, um, we begin to get a handle on the situation that this is a government, um, that is run by, by, uh, two bodies, say like the executive and legislative branch, and that we should be working together. And I'm looking forward, um, to the, um, the mayor making herself available for a full and balanced discussion.
Okay. Is anybody else? Mr. Plant?
Yeah, so I... Thank you, Counsel President. So earlier this evening, you handed, I think, to each one of these. This is the draft that you want for us to, uh, to maintain. And it is fairly dense.
Yes, it is.
There's a lot of information in here. And, and the most important part of this information are sent... Can I mention how many items there are? Would that be okay to mention that?
Yes, go ahead.
There are fourteen items that you have on, or somebody has on here, um, that we want clarification. And quite frankly, it, there's a lot here to, to absorb. I, right now, having received this right before the council meeting, while this may be the right thing to do, I haven't had a chance to review this or digest it to, to be able to make a, a decision as to whether I think the, the wording on this is appropriate. Um, what I don't want this to be is combative. I think what you want to do is to make this informational, at least that's what I'm kind of hearing. And I have, and I'm not sure I really want to sign off on this until I have a chance to, to have the, a full opportunity to read it. So, um, and there's a lot. So, um, I don't frankly feel very comfortable sending this up, uh, this evening without having that, that, um, not having that available to me. So I'm not sure if we can... I know that you have it on the agenda. I know there's just the, the fine headings of one sentence, say, request the presence of the mayor. Um, and I frankly don't have a problem with, you know, having, um, for the most part, I mean, as, as long as we have broad oversight powers, et cetera, and, and we want to ask questions and, um, I get that. But I just, I don't feel comfortable with this right now. I'll vote in on it tonight.
Okay. Is there anybody else?
Um, just Counsel President, I know that we have the fourteen items there, but there are other concerns as well. And I'm thinking, you know, um, that, that, that we or any individual here from this body may have experienced. And, um, I think at that point, we'll try to make it, uh, part of, of the discourse. You know, it's, it's basically just a discussion.
Um, I, I agree with you, Mr. Plant, that there's a lot of materials here that we need, we need to review. Uh, the mayor is going to have exactly the same opportunity as us, uh, because he's, he, uh, he's going to have, he will, I believe that he already has a copy. Uh, if not, I will make sure that, uh, Secretary Lillian will, uh, give it to him, uh, no, later than tomorrow morning. The discussion, the discussion needs to take place. There's no question about that. Uh, there's plenty of time for, until the next meeting, we are talking about a period of two weeks in which we can review this material. That, again, if we question as to whether the discussion should take place between us and the mayor, uh, then, then obviously you will vote, if we question that, then you will vote against it. But if you, if you feel that this discussion, uh, needs to take place and that it will be a healthy one, both for the executive power and the legislative power, then you will vote in favor. Uh, and again, it will give you, it will give you a time of two weeks for you to review, uh, beforehand, uh, before we even, you know, before we, we meet with the mayor. So it's, it's going to be, it's going to be two weeks that, that I believe that there's plenty of time that we can review it. Uh, if you have, uh, questions, you can call me. Uh, we can, you, we can talk to the, uh, personal director. We can talk to the city attorney. Uh, so you, you have, you have those resources that you can contact if you have any questions or concerns about any of what is being said in these documents. Uh, so it is important that in those two weeks, you do take the time to read them. Uh, you do take the time to read them. You do take the time to question. Uh, you do take the time to contact the people that you feel, uh, will give you some straight answers, whether it's me, or whether it's the mayor, or whether it's the city attorney, or whether the personal director. Uh, the fact is that, that we were, we're going to have plenty of time between now and the time where this discussion needs to take place. Uh, Counsel Bernard, please.
Thank you, Counsel President. Um, I kind of want to echo some of your statements, but also kind of, um, Counsel Plant, and mix them all together. Um, we are getting this for the first time tonight, and there are fourteen points on here. And I don't dispute that maybe some of these items are appropriate for discussion and real questions and real concerns. But I'm not willing to say tonight, before everyone had a chance to read the packet. I admit I peeked at it during the budget proposal. Don't tell. Um, I just, what if I think four out of the fourteen are completely illegitimate? I do not even want to raise those to the mayor. I think that they might be out of, but I don't know. Like, I haven't read them all.
No, I understand.
So I guess my thought is, I'd like the two weeks to say yes to all fourteen, or yes to one through nine, but no to eleven and twelve. And I, I think there's some real issues and real concerns. We heard from people tonight that spoke. I, I've heard from people. I also feel like sometimes we get information back that references an audit or other information that people are forgetting to mention, um, when they're talking about a layoff or removal, they're basing it on inefficiencies thrown in audits and different, um, you know. I think there's a lot of legitimacy and illegitimacy, you know? When I look at, um, one in particular person says they were just reading this for the first time tonight, he was laid off because he was white, and his tasks were reassigned to someone else. And he puts, "Who is white?" Like, so how is that race if, I, I, I mean, I just really want to read and digest this, um, before I say, "Yeah, I want to ask the mayor to come down here and talk to us on all fourteen of these points," when I don't really even know yet what these fourteen points are. I want to just sit down and read it thoroughly. Um, but I, I think you are right. Once there's discussion that there's an unfairness, even if it's not true, the conversation needs to be had. Uh, I absolutely agree with you that the conversation needs to be had. Um, and my only thought was, I would like to read this before I vote that we, what we're going to have the conversation about. That's mine.
Is there anybody else that, um...
Mr. President?
Yes, go ahead. Mr. Vasquez?
Through you, Mr. President. Thank you very much. Um, I'm very open to having conversations on any, at any given point with, you know, whether it is among ourselves as city councilors, or with the mayor, any, uh, department heads. Um, I do understand the concerns that have been brought up here. I quickly, um, you know, skimmed through these pages. And I think the concerns that I bring brought up, uh, they, they seem to be valid. And I, I think that a conversation will al- always be healthy among the executive and the legislative branch of government of any municipality, or, or, you know, the state, or even the nation. Um, I, I mean, with this, we're not necessarily taking any action other than, than asking the, the mayor to come and speak with us. The action is not, it's not any particular action, uh, other than, let's have a conversation. I think that's a healthy thing to do. Um, I wish I could have done that, uh, in the prior administration, have a healthy discussion about issues that had been faced, uh, before. But we didn't have the opportunity really to go ahead. But I think if we have an opportunity now, let's go ahead and do that. And, and let's talk openly about what's happening in our city. And possibly as a result of that, we'll be able to resolve many of the issues that we're facing today. Um, I'm a big fan of open communication. Let's talk things through and understand where we are all coming from. So I do support this initiative, um, after quickly looking at, at the letter. There's one thing, though. My name was spelled improperly. So I would suggest that before, uh, anything goes up as, uh, to the mayor, there's a correction in, in my name. Thank you.
Counsel President?
I, I would like, I would like to emphasize one thing, uh, which is very important. Uh, there are very sensitive items here that obviously cannot be discussed, uh, in a public discussion. Okay? We know that. Uh, there are items here that if we're going to go into details, we will have to go into a secret session. Okay? And obviously, uh, the newspaper always reminds me that we need to, uh, we need to abide by the, uh, by state law regarding, uh, executive section. And, and I will abide by that, definitely. Uh, so any item, any item that is of a sensitive nature, where litigation is already in place, and, uh, if we need details, we will have to go into a secret session. But we will not go into a secret session on any item where there is no litigation at this time or projected.
I would say, well, projected, because this is...
Yes, exactly.
A point of view, if it's threatened or pending.
Exactly.
So if it's threatened, then we should go, yeah.
No, e- even if, if they are threatening, uh, unless there is, there is a litigation already filed, we will not be able to go into a secret, a secret session.
Let's double check that, because I, I think it's threatened or pending. And I, I don't think you want to give away our strategy.
Yes.
Or you basically give ammunition for somebody to come back and sue the city...
Of course.
When we know that there's litigation threatened, especially if it's already threatened in writing.
Yes.
Um, even if the suit is not pending, um...
Uh, I will check with the city attorney to make sure that we abide by state law regarding, uh, uh, executive session meetings, uh, just, just to make sure that we don't, we don't go out of our way to hurt the city in any way.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, Counsel Almonte, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I just, um, briefly, thank you, Counsel President. Just briefly looking over a couple of things here. Um, there could be a chance of like, maybe a couple of other things that I can think of off the top of my head that, um, are, haven't been put in to play. And I think that, um, it would be helpful and healthy to put them in because, um, we don't want to discuss a bunch of issues and then find out that we have other issues that, um, weren't able to be implemented. So these two weeks have given us some time to, um, see what's here and what isn't. I think it's, it's healthy for us to, to visit those sessions so that we know, um, and ask all the pertinent questions that we need to ask, so that when, when we sit down, we've already revised a lot of the situations and that, um, we're ready, basically, you know, to discuss the issues at hand. But, um, yeah, just looking through it briefly, I think there's some other issues that need to be added to the draft. Thank you.
Any other comments before we take a vote?
Yeah, just comments that since we're bringing him down, and I don't want to, you know, we're, we're making this official appeal for the, the mayor to, um, to grace us with his presence. Um, I think it's important that we, that it be known that all of the concerns are not just personnel-related. And I don't know if you want to add, um, a ten where, uh, you know, we have concerns about information not being, um, given to us and, um, on proper time. Um, I have concerns about the, uh, the treatment of constituents within boards, um, that have wanted public participation and have been denied. So, so there, there are a number of issues that are not just related, and I think these are all really important. But I think it's also equally important that we, that we look at, you know, the treatment of our constituency, um, in the, in these talks.
Okay. Um, if there are new items that you would like to add to this list, then obviously, uh, we cannot take a vote on this matter tonight. We will have to table it, and you guys will have to submit the, the items that you would like to add.
Because I'm just saying, if we got, uh, a more, a broader, a number ten that's broader, because see, I thought that you arrived at it when you get to, um, to this part around the mayor abiding by the charter, by his oath of office and the enforcement. Um, and I thought that there, we, there was going to be an opportunity to talk about that piece. But, um, it then again returns to the issue of, of employment issues, labor issues.
Remember that you have two set of documents. One that provides a summary, and one that provides the details. Okay? So you need to look not only at the summary, but look at the details that the other, that's the second document, uh, provides. So that, the, the intention of that is to, to, uh, so, so that you understand better the summary that is, that is being given.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So the details is included with that. But again, those details are for your eyes only.
All right. So let me say this. Um, I, I do have those concerns, and I'm not clear that maybe others have that concern. And it seems that these labor-related issues, um, are in a state of urgency. So, um, why don't I just, uh, wait and have these issues, um, that I've talked about?
We're going to be working, hopefully want to be working with the mayor for another year. And those of you who will get re-elected next, uh, next year can, will have the, the chance to...
Can carry on.
...the mayor for another two years, which will give us a chance to really, uh, increase communication. Let me say that, that I met with the mayor, uh, for about two hours. Uh, it was a very private meeting between him and I. Uh, we have a, we had a very good conversation. Uh, we, we, one thing that we definitely agreed that is that there has to be more communication between the city council and the executive branch, uh, and that, that we need to trust each other, uh, that we need to, uh, go by, by the book, uh, and that we need to do things properly in the, in the proper process that should be followed.
Right.
Okay? So it was, I, I believe it was a very productive, uh, meeting. Uh, and again, uh, I'm hoping that this will be simply the beginning of, of a long relationship of communicating back and forth between the city council and the executive branch, uh, in, 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 in creating an understanding that we must do things, uh, taking each other into account.
Right. Well, let it be known that, um, I don't want to, um, slow down the pace on these labor issues, because apparently everything is, it's all labor issues. Um, and I think that we should then have yet another discussion after this.
Sure.
Where, because it has to be in public. I, I think it has to be a public forum that addresses the issues that I'm talking about because it affects the public.
Sure. Okay. Are there any other questions, uh, remarks? Yes. Counsel Aquino?
Was the mayor invited to this meeting?
Not to this meeting, no. The reason why we're going to take a vote is to actually invite him to the meeting. So we need a majority vote, uh, to invite him to this, to our next city council meeting.
Okay. Um, most of the stuff that are in the list, we are familiar with.
I'm sorry?
Most of the stuff that is in the list, we are familiar with. It's not a secret for us. Of course, we cannot talk about it, but everyone knows about it. And I think it's healthy for us to talk with the mayor and the people that already have the information out there, knows what's going on. There's a lot of things that we had, we were supposed to take action a long time ago, um, and we haven't. Um, I'm not going to talk about any particular one, but we have talked about them here, and it's been rejected by our couns-, our council. And I think it, it will be very helpful for us to clarify with the mayor and to move on with these things, because I think it's important to clarify, and the people that know what's going on have the right information from us. Thank you.
If there are no other comments or discussion, I'm going to call for a vote. Again, the motion, the motion, uh, which has been properly second, is to request the attendance of the mayor, uh, the next city council meeting. Okay?
Counsel President, I can make, I'd like to make a motion to, to table that document in light of the fact that you also asked that other counselors have an opportunity to bring more things to the table, as well as for some of us who have an opportunity as a courtesy to be able to review the document.
Point of information?
Since the motion to, uh, to table supersede, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Let's take a vote as to whether you want to table this matter. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
No.
Oppose?
No.
Roll call, please.
Counsel Vice President?
No.
Counsel Bernard?
Yes.
Counsel Aquino?
No.
Counsel Almonte?
No.
Counsel Reyes?
No.
Counsel Tumi?
No.
Counsel LaPlante?
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez?
No.
Counsel President?
No. The motion will pass. Okay, we're going to take a vote on the original motion. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Roll call, please.
You know you want to say yes, maybe.
Counsel Vasquez?
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante?
No.
Counsel Tumi?
Yes.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Almonte?
Yes.
Council Aquino?
Yes.
Council Bernal?
No.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Council President Aldana?
Yes, the motion passed. Thank you. Uh, we will go ahead and move into, uh, Chairman of the Bojero Finance Committee, item three thirty-three fourteen and three seventy-seven fourteen, are they new items?
Uh, no, Mr. President, item three thirty-three fourteen is an appropriation transfer for fiscal year 2015. Uh, and this came up from the subcommittee with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing. And I make that in favor of a motion.
Second.
There's a motion, again, which had been, uh, three seventy-seven fourteen?
Three thirty-three fourteen.
Three thirty-three fourteen. There's a motion on the floor to approve document three thirty-three fourteen. It has been properly seconded. Are there any questions? If there is none, all, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, continue.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Document three seventy-seven fourteen was, uh, an authorization to exceed the snow unstanding in accordance to, uh, Nastajis's General, uh, chapter forty-four. Um, this is something that we do every, every year.
Yeah.
Um, just as a point of reference, every year we, uh, budget a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for snow unstanding, but we usually do go, um, over that, uh, budget item, uh, due to the expenditure that we have, and this is just a motion to approve, uh-
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, uh, who seconds the motion? Oh, Sandy. Okay, uh, any questions? If there is none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Okay, let's go into committee reports, and I would like to, Madam Chair of the Ordinance Committee to take document two, three seventy-two fourteen, please.
Thank you, Council President. Um, on November twentieth, the ordinance committee met, and we reviewed a petition that we got the handicap parking at Two Austin Street requesting it to be removed. Yomira Disla, um, sent correspondence to the committee saying that, um, she no longer lives there. She has moved to assisted living, and the need for the handicap parking is no longer needed. So it came up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, um, to have this ordinance removed. Make it the form of a motion, thank you.
Wow, they, what, they put her in the nursing room?
Um, I think she moved herself, but- Do you know her?
Yes.
She's at one ninety-one Maple Street.
Thank you. It is. Maybe she has some hours available. Thank you.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor, and it has been properly seconded. Are there any questions? If there is none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Madam Chair, do you ha- uh-
That was the only one for ordinance, two withdrawals, but-
Okay, that, that was it, right?
Yep.
Okay, um, uh, Mr. Vasquez, uh, document three seventy-nine fourteen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Document three seventy-nine fourteen is, uh, the mass, uh, decontamination unit grant on the amount of two thousand dollars by, um, Fire Chief, uh, John Marsh. Uh, he was at our-
Two withdrawals.
Subcommittee meeting and explained whether the thousand dollars will be used, which is, um, to be able to purchase equipment, heating equipment for the firehouse. And he came up with a favorable recommendation and I make a, uh, a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve document three seventy-nine fourteen. It has been properly seconded. Any questions? If there is none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Document two eighty-fourteen is an emergency management grant on the amount of forty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars, also placed on the agenda by Chief Marsh. Um, this particular, um, grant is to be able to, um, purchase an incident command vehicle and computer workstations to be utilized by the, the fire department. And this came with a favorable recommendation to approve, and I make that in favor of a motion.
Uh, motion has been made and properly seconded that we approve document three eighty-fourteen. Are there any questions for discussion? If there is none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, Mr. Chairman of the Housing Committee?
We did that one.
We did that one.
Sixty-nine oh nine.
No, sixty-nine, sixty-nine oh nine.
The Housing Committee voted by unanimous vote to send the document sixty-nine oh nine A with a favorable recommendation. This is disposed of the property at three hundred and three oh six Prospect Street as a direct disposition to Daniel G. Berrios for the assessed price of six thousand three hundred dollars with a seven conditions incorporated. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Motion has been made to sell three hundred to three oh six Prospect Street to Daniel Berrios for the amount of six thousand three hundred. Uh, Mr. Chairman of the Housing Committee, what is the purpose of the, of the use for the property?
Open space and parking.
Open space, okay. Motion has been properly seconded. Are there any other questions? If there is none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, continue, Mr. Chairman.
This is document number one eighty-one zero nine, the Housing Committee voted, one, excuse me, one eighty-one oh nine A. Housing Committee voted to send this up with a favorable recommendation, um, dispose of property at fifty-five fifty-seven Haverhill Street as a direct disposition to Magdalcanalis, can I pronounce that correctly? And Mary Canalis for the sum of six thousand three hundred dollars. And there is a motion here, as my memory, to notify a butters and get approvals from Plan Department that notifications were sent to the meeting. And I want to make sure with the Ms. Saint Ange that that took place. And I'll first of all make that in the form of a motion, and then I'll ask Ms. Saint Ange that took place. Motion made.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Questions? Mr. Plant?
Just wanna make sure that all the butters were notified of that particular property, were they?
Yeah, the day after. I had delivered and mailed, um, a letter.
Okay.
Question?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I was looking at the square footage here. These, uh, aren't these normally what they call garage sales?
I'm sorry?
Aren't these normally what they call garage sales based on the-
Yes.
Yard sale?
Yeah.
Yard sale?
Yes.
This is a direct disposition that's slightly different than the yard sale. We don't, the yard sale is one square, a dollar per square foot, and the direct disposition can be at a different sum. All right.
What's the difference in the plot?
A direct disposition is for the, um, assessed value. Um, the yard sale is only for residential properties and-
Well, what would be the difference between the direct disposition and the yard sale? I mean-
The yard sale is a dollar a square foot.
I understand that.
The assessed value is done by the assessor. I go with the value here.
It's the, I think what he's saying is, the yard sales are only for residential uses.
Yes.
And the direct disposition is for commercial or industrial or other uses. I think that's what you're-
What's the use of somebody else?
Is that a commercial zone, isn't that why?
This is a commercial. As you can see, it's a, um, business district. It's for a commercial, commercial use. It's an auto sales place.
Okay, thank you.
But they're using it only again for, just for parking and for open space.
But this is just for parking, yeah.
They're not building or constructing anything on it.
Okay. If there are no other questions on document one eighty-one oh nine, uh, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it, continue, Mr. Chairman.
This is document number three forty-nine fourteen A. House Committee voted with a favorable recommendation to send this document up, uh, this is sixteen Broadway Avenue, uh, for a, declare as a surplus and direct disposition to Efren Sanchez for the sum of, uh, twelve thousand dollars with the conditions, uh, listed inside the document that, and you've also noticed that the application is now signed. I make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to sell sixteen Broadway Avenue to Efren Sanchez in the amount of twelve thousand dollars. Are there any questions? If there is none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, continue.
Uh, this is three sixty-six fourteen. Uh, the- Housing Committee voted to send this up with a favorable recommendation to declare surplus document three sixty-six fourteen, which is five dash seventeen Elizabeth Street, and make that in the form of a motion.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to declare five dash seven Elizabeth Street as surplus property. Uh, are questions? If there is none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. There is a table matter, a document, uh, the borrowing of, um, uh, Mr. Chairman of the Bojero Finance Committee, of three sixty-nine fourteen?
Yes.
Uh, can I get a motion to, uh, take this document, three sixty-nine fourteen, out of table matters? Motion has been made and properly seconded. In favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Uh, Mr. Chairman of the Bojero Finance Committee, uh, you have a concern about documents that were not submitted in support of this request. Uh, can you give us an update?
Definitely. Thank you very much, Mr. President. And before anything, I would like to thank all the councillors that supported me in the last, um, meeting in voting in favor to table this matter because it, it clearly, um, was information that we needed in order to make a, an educated decision and to be held accountable by everyone, uh, that we are serving. Uh, we took an, uh, we, we were sworn into office, and we took an oath, um, that we will be, uh, protecting every single penny and our city charter and ordinances. So thank you to the eight councillors, seven councillors along with myself, who supported this last time. We did receive the documentation that was requested because it was important that we had it, um, including, uh, quotes that were necessary to make a, an educated decision, as mentioned before, uh, what our debt services will look like in the future, what our current debt services are. I know that this was sent to all councillors. I hope that everyone had an opportunity to review it, um, ahead of time. The, so everything is clearly detailed at this time, and I would like to thank, uh, Ms. there, um, Mark Ianello, who's our finance director, as well as the police department and the, the fire department, along with, um, the mayor, who were very diligent in getting us the information, uh, to make an informed decision. Now, with that said, I would like to make a motion to order a public hearing of this document.
There's a motion on the floor to order a public hearing for, uh, document three sixty-nine fourteen, the borrowing of two million five hundred thousand. Uh, motion has been seconded.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Yep.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I still have one thing outstanding. I'm looking for the police department, that's regarding the privacy, um, um, element with respect to the license plates. So I can see some of the information here, but I think we just need to make sure that we're on the same page as far as how long are these records retained? Um, and, uh, how often are they gathered, et cetera, et cetera? So I, I think I sent the information out. I don't need it tonight. I just need it before the next meeting. Uh, did you have it? Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, just to, to touch the point on the, on, um, what I think is, is, is equipment that we don't need in the city, uh, just a machine that's gonna swipe license plates when they could just punch the numbers in by themselves. Um, it takes two seconds to punch in someone's license plate. I think that something that would benefit the city of Lawrence more would be kinda like what's happening across, um, the country where we have, um, the cameras that are being put for public safety, um, both on both sides, so that that way it's not a hearsay conversation as to something when it happens as a discrimination against, uh, a resident citizen or even discrimination against a police officer. Um, a machine that reads, in, in such a small city, I believe a, a machine that reads license plates will be a waste of money, uh, a waste, a waste of taxpayers' money when the police officers here in our city, um, have done diligent job just looking at a plate and punching it in. It's, it's not that hard to do. Um, I believe that our, our resources could be spent a lot wiser elsewhere. So before we do, I, I approved it for, for a public hearing. I, I made the, I seconded the motion because obviously there, there are issues on there that we do need to address, but there are issues in there that I think that, um, like I said, it would just be a splurge. Um, it's like, uh, you know, a gra- to me, it, it's not needed. There are other things that I think that we can spend that money on. So I think that we should look at that and, and maybe, um, give it some type of consideration. Maybe if I, um, figure out how much it would cost for a system like that. Are there any grants that are available to have something like that be had here in the city? Because I think it would, that, something like that would definitely benefit the, the constituents, the residents of the city, and also the police officers, cause it would, it would help to protect, um, someone's word against another one when you're able to see exactly what's going on. Um, you know, across the country, all kinds of crazy things are happening. Um, we have had six murders here in our city. Not to say that it could have been caught on camera, but what if it could have been? Um, so we just, you know, it, we always talk about how we can prevent things from happening. I think this would be a great tool to help prevent things from happening or for us to see how things are happening and why they are happening across not just our, our, our country, but here in our city. So, um, I think diligent use of that money if we are gonna borrow it, um, because it'll be five million dollars by the time we're done paying between interest and the money back. So I think that we, we do need to take a second chance, but for purposes of discussing it, I, I did second the motion. But I would like to know if we can get some type of, um, uh, uh, I don't know, um, an estimate as to how much something like that would cost, you know, for the city. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If there is none, again, we are taking a vote simply to order a public hearing. Uh, if you think of other questions, uh, between now and the public hearing of information that you would like to get, additional information besides the one that has been provided, uh, please feel free to call the appropriate department so that they can provide that information not only to you, but also to the full council.
Correct, thank you.
Tumi?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only information I would like, the additional information I would like to get for this is, um, where do we stand currently with free cash?
Okay.
I couldn't hear the question. I couldn't-
Where do we stand currently with free cash?
With the free cash.
Give me that right now.
I can answer that, Counselor. Uh, we just had free cash approved a couple of weeks ago, and our free cash was approved at nine point, uh, four something million dollars.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to go beyond ten o'clock. It has been properly seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye, 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 aye.
Continue, please.
Mr. Ianello, you mentioned what, nine point four million?
It, we just got the, it was just recert- it was just certified. It has to be certified each year. It just was certified a, a week or so ago, and I, it's nine point something million, uh, nine point four or nine point five million dollars. Uh, last year, it was a, it was, uh, certified at five point eight million dollars. So we, we had a, uh, we had quite, quite a good year, and we ended our, uh, our revenues exceeded our estimates. Uh, we returned a little bit in appropriations, and we did have some, uh, selling of tax title properties, which helped us. So that's where we stand. We haven't voted any of it. It's, it's a new authorization, so that's what starts.
Good, thank you.
Attorney, any other question before we take a vote? Okay, if there's no other question, let's take a vote. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, Counselor, there was, um, I had met with the city attorney to develop the language for that change in the ninety days, uh, temporary employ- temporary, uh, job appointments.
Yes.
And for some reason, it's not in the package, and I apologize for that.
I got it today.
Yeah, you got it today?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Uh, I apologize that we don't have it in the package. What I will do is, uh, is I will bring it up again at the next council meeting so that we, uh, as a matter of fact, I will put a copy in your mailbox just to make sure, so if you get a chance, please review it. Uh, I'm not gonna talk about that. I, I was going to mention something else, but I, I'd rather not. Um, okay. Are there any other matters that you would like to, uh, take out of table matters before I go into the new business?
No.
No.
I'd say? Oh, yes, oh, yes. I would like, remember, would you like to speak about that, or you want me to?
I'm happy to do it. I'm happy to do it, either way.
Go ahead.
You're gonna retable?
Oh, well, two things, um-
Table?
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna retable that, that item?
Uh, no, because we ordered the, it's already gone to a public hearing.
It's going to a public hearing?
Going to a public hearing, so it's gonna come off the table?
Yeah, it's gonna come off.
Yes.
Um, thank you, Council President. Two things. One is, tonight, we're gonna withdraw two items from the agenda that came up from ordinance, but I'm just reminding folks, I did get one request from one item from Council LaPlante of an item that he did not want to have removed from the agenda. Anything prior to December of two thousand thirteen, if it's still on the ordinance committee agenda, take a look at it tonight before you go home. agenda, take a look at it tonight before you go home. If you want me to keep it, I'm happy to retain it, but if you don't tell me affirmatively, please don't withdraw this. We're going to do housekeeping. It's tomorrow night. It's getting withdrawn. So, just let me know tonight before you leave if there's anything on there that you'd like to keep. That, that being said, there's two items to withdraw tonight, too.
Yes. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Uh, item three, uh, item three oh five twelve. Can I entertain a motion to withdraw this document?
Second.
Motion had been made and properly seconded to withdraw document three oh five four twelve. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. Only get a twenty-six one.
Okay, let's take a vote again. We are withdrawing document three oh five twelve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Document three forty-one fourteen, I would like to entertain a motion to withdraw this document.
So moved. Second.
Motion had been made and properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Excellent. Okay.
All business.
Uh, no, uh, all business.
Refer.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we, uh?
Refer.
Mr. Plant.
Send it to housing.
Document one sixty-five oh nine. I'm sorry.
To be sent to.
One sixty-nine, is that, I'm going to, you want me to refer that to housing?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to refer document one sixty-nine oh nine to the housing committee. Uh, document three eighty-three fourteen, ordinance committee. Document three eighty-four fourteen, ordinance committee. Document three eighty-five fourteen, ordinance committee. Document three eighty-six fourteen, ordinance committee. Document three eighty-seven fourteen, ordinance committee. Document three eighty-eight fourteen to the housing committee. Document three eighty-nine fourteen, budget and finance, uh, budget and finance committee. Document three ninety fourteen to the personal committee. Uh, document three ninety-one fourteen to the ordinance committee. Document three ninety-two fourteen to the budget and finance. Document three ninety-three fourteen to the ordinance committee. Document three ninety-four fourteen and three ninety-six fourteen to the budget and finance, and document three ninety-seven fourteen to the budget and finance committee. Uh, do we have any, was there any document as an emergency, I believe?
Mister?
Three ninety-seven.
Oh, yeah, I mentioned thirty-nine, isn't that, that's the one? Three ninety-seven fourteen?
Three ninety-eight.
Oh, three ninety-eight. Okay, which document is that?
We got a call later, uh, after the budget was closed, to ask if this could be added as, um, my officer Flores, to add this to the license.
Okay.
Taxi license matters for referral.
I'm going to refer document three ninety-eight fourteen to the ordinance committee.
Mr. President, I'd like to suspend the rules and take document, and add a new document, three ninety-eight fourteen.
Three ninety-nine.
Three ninety-nine?
No, I, I have a document that I would like to add.
Oh.
Oh.
That's three ninety-nine.
Three ninety-nine fourteen.
Three ninety-nine fourteen.
Yes, it will be...
There's a motion on the floor to suspend the rules and add document three ninety-nine fourteen.
It will be, um, a resolution for the winter parking ban, um...
Uh, hold on. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion had been made and properly seconded. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the purpose, uh, of this particular resolution is because every year, um, starting December fifteenth, um, until April first of the following year, we establish a winter parking ban, uh, for portions of the city in which, um, resident, in which we establish the odd even, uh, parking or no parking at all in certain streets. And the purpose of this particular parking, uh, uh, resolution is to, um, ask the police department, uh, you know, the administration and any enforcers of the parking ban to please be mindful and considerate of, uh, residents, um, when it comes to winter parking because many of them aren't able to find parking or, um, they may not have parking at their homes. So, when, uh, you know, if anyone does park in the streets and it's, there's not snow, it's not snowing, we don't have a snowstorm, not a real snow emergency, um, we're urging them not to, you know, to, to be unreasonable in, in the enforcement of this particular, um, parking ban and rather give them, you know, the opportunity to, to park there. However, if there was a real emergency, snow emergency, uh, residents are to uphold the, the regulation as, as it is, and if necessary, uh, police officers should, um, you know, ticket them or tell them, uh, whatever the, the regulation states. So, I think it's important to highlight that, again, only eight out of nine city councilors signed this particular resolution, including Councilor Modesto Maldonado, Council President, uh, Council Vice President Neil Galvares Rodriguez, Council at Large Roger Tumi, Councilor from District A, Sandy Almonte, Councilor from District B, Oneira Quino, Councilors from District E, Lino Conover Now, Councilor from District B, Estela Reyes, and myself, Councilor from District C, Kendris Vasquez. Um, again, thank you to all seven councilors that did sign it, and I will be forwarding this to the mayor, the city, the, um, the mayor's office, uh, as well as the police department.
Uh, discussion.
This is a non-binding, it's not an adopted ordinance.
Yes, it's not an adopted...
It's basically asking the police to please give people a break, especially when there's no snow on the ground.
Definitely. Yeah, it's a non, it's a non-binding, uh, resolution or ordinance per se. It's just asking for a favor to be mindful and considerate when it comes to, uh, the parking situation because it's very tough, particularly in the Arlington neighborhood and, uh, the, you know, the, the section on, uh, the North Common area. I think, uh, also, Councilors Aquino and, uh, Almonte have difficulties in their district in which residents have no parking whatsoever, um, and as a result of it, um, you know, they might get ticketed, um, you know, unfairly so because, I mean unfairly, yet based on how the, the parking ban is written, uh, the police officers are doing their job. So, it's like, how do, how do we go about it? So, please be considerate when it comes to parking in the winter months. All right, thank you.
Uh, councilors, um, the parking ban, the winter parking ban was approved back in nineteen fifty-seven. If I recall, I, I asked you to do a little research.
Oh, my goodness.
We're way back, and, uh, as a matter of fact, four years ago. Nineteen fifty-seven. How many vehicles were here in nineteen fifty-seven?
Seven hundred.
Okay. Uh, so, we are, we are enforcing, we are enforcing a winter parking ban that was voted in, in nineteen fifty-seven, and there were very few vehicles. Uh, it seems to me, it seems to me that we should review, we should review that and, and find that, you see, there are a lot of streets that don't meet the minimum requirement, the minimum width by maybe one or two feet, okay? Uh, maybe what we should do is to bring this to discussion, uh, maybe to the housing committee or the ordinance committee so that we can review, we can revisit, uh, this, uh, this ban ordinance that was approved nineteen fifty-seven, uh, because a lot of things have changed. I mean, we need to change with the time. Uh, nineteen fifty-seven, believe me, there were very few vehicles in the city of Lawrence, and now, uh, God, almost every household have one vehicle, one or more vehicles. So, I think we need, we need to revisit, and what I will do is, uh, uh, maybe Mr. Vasquez would like to, uh, co-sponsor with me to include this item in the next agenda so that we can, uh, review and ask, uh, the DPW director to come. Maybe we will have to measure every street again, or maybe there, there's already information is there, and all we have to do is review and see whether we can increase the amount of parking, uh, on the streets if the difference is not, is not that great. I mean, if there's a difference of one or two or three feet between what we required versus what is there, then maybe we should, uh, we, we can weigh those streets and, and include them as part of the, uh, of the, uh, of the streets that people can park because of the fact that the amount of vehicles on the streets of Lawrence have multiplied exponentially to what was, to what happened nineteen fifty-seven. So, uh, yes.
Um, while that might take a while, what, that you're going to study it and send it to committee, I, I would suggest that we have some kind of discussion on what we're going to do, you know, during the snowstorms and stuff. Now, um, that's when, you know, under the Sullivan administration, there was an emergency, um, plan in place, and that included taking all cars to the penalty park and parking there, and having some kind of bus that would go around and pick up people and take them to...
Turn your microphone on.
La cucaracha, la cucaracha. Okay. So, um, I think he can hear me now. So, it, as I was saying, and it would, it would allow for people to park there, and then there'll be a bus that would take you, I guess, home and would take you back to the parking, uh, area. Um, I don't say that it has to be specifically that way. And then there was a, a twenty-four hour hotline in place. Um, in that case, in that situation, the mayor was the one that was carrying the, um, the phone and dealing with the emergencies. Um, but I think we should look at something like that, how, some of the streets are so narrow that we have to find a way to get the snow out of them, and we also have to be realistic that these cars are going to get, you know, buried. So, and, um, the result of being buried in all that, so, oftentimes, these are problems even with your, with your vehicle.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I think we should be talking about putting something like that in place.
Well, I think that as part of the, uh, as part of the, uh, including that item in the agenda, we can, we can raise those discussions as part of that, so, uh, I think it would be a, a great discussion, a great topic for, that we should, uh, talk about. Okay? Uh, there's a motion on the floor to approve, uh, the, uh, resolution. Okay, and it was properly seconded. Uh, let's take a vote on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No, no?
No.
Okay, good. Uh, Mr. Mr. Plant, you had a question?
No, I have a question. No, I, I, now that I'm being singled out on this, as the...
I'm sorry.
... on this. Listen, this is, this may be a very good resolution. I, I got it this evening. My, and everybody's got a reason for doing what they're doing, and I can appreciate it all. Just, I, I just, myself, I'm a little more cautious about intruding myself into enforcement activities. We're looking to change behaviors when it comes to parking. I think we're talking about that a little bit.
Yes.
I think it's well intentioned. I asked the drafter if he could just hold off for a couple of weeks so I could have a chance to think about it and talk to some folks just to make sure that I'm comfortable with it, but there was a clearly urgency to get this done this evening for training purposes or whatever. So, um, long and short of it, I'm not, I'm voting against, because I didn't have the courtesy of a couple more weeks to take advantage of it. It may very well be a good idea. I'm going to be working with both the drafter as well as the council president on making more common sense decisions with respect to sm, snow parking and removal, et cetera, et cetera. So, don't take offense to it. I just needed a little more time.
Okay, roll call.
Council Vasquez.
Yes.
Uh, other, other way. Council Vice President.
Yes.
Council Bernal.
Yes.
Council Aquino.
Yes.
Council Almonte.
Yes.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Tumi.
Yep.